All right, so you're trying to expect.
Okay. So you got us on now?
What, what, the building zoning plumbing?
All right, any ideas about?
Something, and just riding with the inspectors, what I was told. I have a person that he needs somebody who's on. Two weeks ago.
Now, you have a battery light you're linking out.
Do inspection, I'll cover it.
I'm into the plug-in, so. There's that enough power, right?
My county is not, I do as well. They didn't.
Okay, well, my laptop is not working.
I don't know.
I had your speakers on.
Hey.
All right, we were just talking about your retired plumbing there.
I am retired.
That's like pointing at me. That's what I thought you were doing. On five or six outlets, which outlets, so I don't know unless laptop just died on. But it does have the battery light blinking even if you're plugged into the electric. Well, and they're built in, right? You can't change them out? Now, this is your. Sorry, Mark. Now, this is your old laptop. I don't know if you've never heard anything about it. It looks like. I have the, the light for the. The on button is lit up and the battery light is flashing on me. Can you wrap it up? Okay, yeah, well, I guess we may need a new laptop. How many years? All right, I think I've had it four or five years. I guess so. Okay. And what's managing button that brings, um, screen on and off? Where it doesn't show on the display screens, but it's on my computer? On the F key? All right, well, that's not the problem, but. That's the F nine. Now, that was one, my problem one time, but. That's not the problem this time. All right, we'll have to do the old-fashioned way without overhead and, uh, without PowerPoint. All right, am I calling you when we're done? Yeah, Bert King, I, yeah, I, I called him about the same problem. He didn't call back. Yeah, I've got him on the phone. All right, thank you, sir. So, so we're live now, right?
Yes.
All right, live.
I have you live.
I'll put order the Sunday, November ninth, 2020 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Perry, Mayor Gordon.
Chair McKinley.
Here.
Vice Chair Beatty.
Here.
Commissioner Fitz.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hilton.
Here.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Chair, we have four.
Thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda is the adoption of the minutes from our previous meeting. Everybody had time to review those. Any changes? additions? Not, how the motion to approve those is?
I make a motion. Second.
All on paper?
Aha.
Motion carries. Top here.
Okay, um, next item is old business. Um, we've got three, um, three items on this list. Um, let's start with, I think the probably quickest one is going to be the amateur radio towers. Um, we had some information in our packet. And then some up here, um, force. So this is. A continuation of our last meeting conversation as to what want for draft language, um, to put forth. Um, I think the issues discussed, um, is on this first, first page that we talked about last time. Um, any additional thought as to? These eight items? Um. Anything that you've thought about that you think we need to address?
I guess the only question might be the engineering certification, getting some kind of certification on that because, you know, that, that's a dollars and cents. Uh, as far as getting an engineer to certify either a set of plans or an existing structure or, uh, a destruction or a completion of construction, whatever we decide when that thing has to be certified. And I don't know that we've identified an entity yet that does those type of certifications. Um, we said an engineer, uh, but I don't know exactly what that means. And then, uh, you know, uh, exceeding thirty-five feet, I don't know if that's too low. Um. Cause you know, there's some amateur radio towers that you could probably purchase, uh, and put up. That may go up to a hundred feet and, and whether or not those plans or the, you know, you purchase it from Amazon, whether or not it comes with an engineering certification, I don't know.
But if we were, if, if we require setbacks that is gonna, you know, can't, can't be any closer to your property and if you're gonna have insurance, insurance is going to be insurable, uh, would that remove us from any, any liabilities in the situation anyway?
Oh, and, and one of the.
Well, that's kind of my thought process too. But you know, and at some, at some point, I think it probably does have to require our, you know, homemade antenna would require an engineer, you know, you get to a certain height.
Right.
Get to five hundred feet.
You've got so many regulations from the, from the government that, that we can't infringe on, you know, that we can't even do anything. I mean, our biggest thing is making sure we don't set ourselves up for liability as long as we've got that in the situation where you can't, you know, the setbacks have got to me to exceed the length of the tower for itself. If it falls, falls on your property and if it's insurable, you're, if you can get somebody to insure it, then we should be, you know, we should be free of any liability situations without having to add extreme restrictions.
The, the high school ordinance, the way it reads is written manufacturer's or professional structural, structural engineer certification. So I, where we kind of got going down that last time was, um, Mr. Pence, he had some homemade parts. So I think that's kind of where we, you want to make sure that something you're, if you've got parts that did not come from a manufacturer. Doesn't make that. Because I don't think you can buy part of it, I, I, I'm just, I'm making this, I don't think you can buy an antenna, buy a, a, a package deal and only use some of their parts, not all of their parts and have their warranty or their certification.
Right. Well, I'm sure P S S O N S people eliminate any kind of factors on that. That's pretty much, that's a.
You can use part of their stuff, but if you don't use all of them, eliminate it.
That's a given there, but, uh, I mean, on the same, same thing.
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, as far as the, in the ordinance, uh, what we put in there in terms of that, you know. At what point, at what point do we require an engine, you know, certified engineering cert.
You know, the other thing, we're, we're talking about a different person than somebody that had a CB tower. You know, twenty-five, you know, they'd buy a CB tower, stick it in the backyard, ham radio. Most of these guys are ham radio operators, they're serious, they're about their, what they're doing and if I, I'm going to put that, if I was one and I was going to put that investment in, be sure, I'd be sure that. Yeah, that it would be right. You know, that's a, we're talking about a different caliber of person, I think, than twenty-five, thirty years. Everybody had a CB whip and a CB antenna at their house. That was a whole different situation than what we.
That, that was my only remarks. I mean, I read through this, uh, this draft, uh, that Doug was kind enough to provide us and it looked pretty complete. I didn't have. And I think, uh, when some of the material that Doug provided us over the weekend, Mr. Pence only, uh, communication, I guess concern appeared to be, you know, the certification issue. So I guess we need to, as far as an issue, we need to sort of trash that and, you know, press that out and, and, uh, to make sure that, you know, we're, we're acting appropriately.
Well, and I certainly.
And reasonably, I guess.
When you go to your public hearing, you'll have the opportunity to.
To voice concerns or whatever.
He's got all the materials that you have, okay? And will bring Mr. Ruhl in too, whether he's up to speed or has tried to do.
Yeah, I, you know, and I'm, I'm at a loss because I'm not, you know, I know what ham amateur radio is, but I don't know the parameters, you know, you know, what a standard power height is or, uh, you know, at what point does the SEC begin to regulate the construction and engineering of a tower and you have completely lost on that.
Now, I don't think that FCC would have any criteria set so far yet. What we're talking about, towers, they're going to control the output rule is what they're going to, if I understand right.
Well, I would think if you're going to put up a thousand-foot tower, there's going to be some kind of regulation related to them. SS class.
But we, we, we're setting maximum height to a hundred and twenty feet.
Yeah.
That's what we proposed. Now, the way I've got it drafted, that number's not in there, but. And Madam Chair, we can either go through this, you know, the sections you want to, the particular sections, or we can go line by line, whatever you'd like to do, but on that particular point, um, what I did is basically use the structure that we have now, so thirty-five and under is basically in process, you know, it's basically in approved accessory use. The special exception, which there was some conversation about at this meeting, um, would be thirty-five feet above. And that's certainly one of the topics that you can have to discuss is, you know, at what point you want special exception. I know Commissioner Hilton maybe wanted it for all of them. The starter on this is thirty, above the thirty-five feet is when a special exception comes in. And you'll see that what I did is I incorporated a lot of this into the existing telecommunications tower ordinance, um, which means there's a lot more stuff in there than what we were asked to deal with, but this was also an opportunity to clean up the ordinance a little bit. It references conditional use, I'll do conditional uses as we do special exceptions, so I was able to change that language out and some other things.
Wish you pleasure. You want to go through it line by line?
Um. Do you guys?
I don't, it's not a very lengthy document, I wouldn't think it would take twenty minutes to go through it.
Yeah, I think that's like the rationale to go with it.
That's fine.
All right, and, um, there will be some choices that happen to be made once we get to some of these sections. Under the purpose, and if you want to, uh, this is a cardinal sin for me because it's something that I, if you didn't number your pages. So if you want to do one, two, three, four, five, six, um, for, for me, if we reference page number, it'd be easier for you, but normally I have those on there, but I just missed it this time. Anyway, starting at the top on section eighty-four, twenty-one, there's a purpose statement in the tele. Remember, we're all working out of the, and you do have a copy in the materials that you were emailed and tonight, um, a copy of the current, uh, article, article about communication towers and antennas. So we got the current ordinance and basically I spent the time trying to figure out where are we to work in there so that we would have one ordinance that covered all of it. So what we did is in the underputs, we added a section that lists or talks about amateur radio antennas and their support structure, just so that it's clear in the goals that that's covered in this ordinance. Uh, definitions, there is already a tower definition, but we wanted to include the towers or support structures for federally licensed amateur radio, uh, operators, so that was put into the overall definition.
Where's the definition? Do you have that?
Um. Let's see. Eighty-four, twenty-two. Um, it's on page five here. The terms shall include and not be limited to the following, radio and television commission towers, microwave towers, common carrier towers, and cellular telephone towers.
Okay. And then it goes into the entry stuff?
And then we, I've added that in there, actually at the head of the line as opposed to the back of the line. Uh, let's see. Okay, applicability. Sections. Originally, it was purposely written not to include the amateur radio, but basically I've just reversed it and let's include them in here and we'll exclude them where it's appropriate. And there may be some other sections that, uh, you'll want to exclude and I'll bring those to your attention. So that's what we did here is said, now we're not excluding them, now we're going to include them in this ordinance. And that's, um, basically everything that's in here applies to the amateur radio towers and antennas unless excluded. Definition temporary towers and antennas. We wanted to make sure that it's, you're going to see conditional use to lead it all over. And that's because we, condition, in Georgia, kind of uses and special exceptions are the same thing, just a matter of what term your ordinance uses. So we don't do conditional uses, we do special exceptions, so.
Tower is a temporary tower defined. Let's see. Section eighty-four, twenty-three.
I think it's letter E.
Right, it's pretty lengthy. Antennas or towers to be temporarily loaded on property for a period not to exceed sixty days shall not require a conditional or in this case, a special exception permit. However, these temporary antennas or towers shall meet all of the other requirements, uh, et cetera, et cetera.
So six, that's saturation.
So all that, that language will still be in there, we're just adding that it shall not require a special exception for a temporary tower.
Right, we're just changing the name from conditional use to special exception. So that's, that's not a change in meaning.
Right, not a meaning, but.
A change in the terminology, language. All right, page two.
And this, this says in the temporary towers and antennas, maximum height for any temporary antenna or tower shall be seventy feet.
Right, and of course, up to now, as we make these changes, that only apply to cell tower type operations. But now, if for some reason a ham needs a temporary, uh, radio, either we're in a national emergency and their current one got knocked down, they can put up a temporary one under this provision. Again, something that's like, well, how would this apply in this case? I mean, if something happens, you're not quite sure. Okay, all right, page two. Uh, aesthetics and lighting. C. Just wanted to admit that we included the aesthetics and lighting for federally licensed amateur radio operators. Sometimes I just put that in there, yes, that it does still apply to you rather than the exception. And you'll see that there's, uh, a one, two, and three sections there. Basically, it talks about color issues, screening, et cetera. All right. Now eighty-four dash two-five, the special exceptions general. Now, this is where we start to define out thirty-five feet versus a taller than that. So this is where we start to talk about special exception general. The installation of all antennas and location of all towers in the county, except those support structures, towers, antennas under thirty-five feet used by federally licensed amateur radio station operators shall require a special exception permit for every zoning district. The following provisions, blah, 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 and again, we change out the word. So in this case, everything that would be a cell tower or the radio tower, et cetera, would require that special exception, but we're eliminating the amateur radios thirty-five feet now. Again, this was a topic of conversation at your last meeting. At least one commissioner said, no, they should all be special exceptions, so what I did is I drew the line at thirty-five. You see, some of the ordinances that you've got copies of, um, before tonight and other meetings, there were guidelines at what point you had a special exception or a conditional use and what time you care, what height you didn't. In this case, I just stuck with what we had already had in our ordinance, which was thirty-five feet. So again, that's going to be a topic of discussion if you do or don't like that. And it's repeated several times, uh, in the rest of the changes here. Section one, that's just a change in special exception versus conditional use. And it looks like a change of typo in insert toward the, same thing with section two, chain three. Uh, under B, information required, this is when you apply chaplain requesting a special exception permit under this. So again, that's just a change in the language. Same thing for C. Special exception versus conditional use. Uh, and this is a section, when you do cell towers, this is D, eighty-four, twenty-five, D. When you do cell towers, you're required in the ordinance to search out to see if there are other towers rather than building a new tower and putting, you know, if you can find a closer tower that fulfills your needs, then you're required to do that, to do that search. So we exempt amateur radio station towers, we don't bar them to, hey, if your next door neighbor's also a ham, well, you got to put your antenna on that, we don't do that. If they want their own antenna, they're going to have their own antenna and their own structure. Um, and then there was also a typo on there with proposed or purposed, and I changed out the word propose, it's just a wrong word. Uh, setbacks, following setback consideration requirements shall apply to all antennas including the hams. And this is where we talk about, um, where it's got to be equal to or longer or further than the height of the tower and antenna. So that's what the purpose of this language is. Antennas and towers must be set back a distance greater than or equal to. So you see, if it's underlined language, I know you know this, but we'll repeat it, if it's underlined language is brand new, if it's crossed through, uh, it's being taken out. So this is sort of language was already in there for cell towers. We've just sort of modified it slightly and included your amateur radio. And maybe to make clear, because y'all have used the terminology greater than or equal to, which I thought was a little better than what we already had in the ordinance, so you've got that in there. Uh, prospective antenna and associated tower from the boundary lines, effectively creating potential few extensions to the equipment should be planned for. And as an addition, just say, hey, you're right at the max. Now, maybe you don't want to do that, maybe you want to set it further back just in case in the future you have an even taller antenna onto your tower. Now, the security fencing at the bottom too. Um, this is the current language and this is something that you might not want to impose on amateur, uh, radio operators. Specifically, we have, um, number one, landscaped upper of plant materials that effectively screens the view of the antenna or tower compound from adjacent residential property. The standard buffer consists of a landscaped strip of at least twenty-five feet outside the perimeter of the compound. I'm going to guess that you, number one, I think hams might not like that. So then the, the question is, do you require any buffer at all that landscape is required? You delete them and say they don't have to have one at all. So we don't have to answer that now, but if you want to put a question mark or exit, just you know, we want to come back to that one. Then the buffer, it talks about mature tree growth. Upperrichens. That probably wouldn't have to change unless you just don't require a buffer. Uh, no reason for three to change. Special exception, so H, you get the special exception, conditional use changes again. Three, installing an antenna on existing tower or any height so long as the addition of the antenna adds no more than twenty feet to the height of the existing tower and a setback from all property lines remain equal to or less than the total height of the tower plus. This is where either permit is or isn't required, basically we're saying that if you're only increasing it a certain amount, you don't need to get a building permit for that, but, um, if it goes over that, then we're going to have to have the permit. And that wouldn't change, but you still have to recognize the fall. You can't fall, now, oh, well, now it's too tall, so you can't, um, have that. Shouldn't that language, I mean, I'm, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but it, it says that setback from all the property lines should be, uh, equal to or less than the total height. Should it be equal to or more than the setback, should be equal to or more than the, or more than the total height? Am I reading it wrong? The setback from all property lines remains equal to, and it says less than the total height.
Greater than.
Well, greater, it should be, it should be greater than.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so that's sort of the.
So, I mean, so somebody has a thirty-five foot antenna today and they don't need any kind of, um, special exception for that, let's say. And they add, this says they can add twenty feet to that thirty-five feet and get them to fifty-five feet, but still without a.
Special exception.
And if they add another twenty feet and they get to. And if they add another twenty feet, and they get to seventy-five feet.
Well, the thing you gotta make, though, is it's still close, any closer to the property line.
I guess where I'm going is, do you wanna let them keep going up in height in twenty foot increments without a special exception kicking in at some point?
Well, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but there's still...
No, I, I got this still.
The setbacks still, we can't...
Setback's still greater than or equal to.
Yeah.
Whatever they do to that. Whatever file height of that is.
You could change the line was to a one-time twenty-foot addition.
If you wanted them at that, or say, you know, after another, of course, who's gonna track?
What?
No, nobody.
Yeah.
Nobody.
We have a lot of ordinances that are based on honesty. But, you know, if you do it in the middle of twenty acres, who's gonna know?
Yeah.
The you in the crowd, you know? Until we start getting our drone core for COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah. Exactly.
Now, that's, you can come back to that, or if you wanna address that. That's an easy address right there, if you want. Just limited one addition without having a special exception.
So, we're talking about a, a minimum thirty-five, thirty-five per millimeter additional, a one-time additional twenty-foot addition.
Now, remember, this language also applies to cell towers. So, you're either gonna separate them out in this case, or you're gonna leave. Again, you, you know, a twenty-foot extension to your ham radio may give you more heartburn than a hundred-and-fifty-foot cell tower.
What I, what I say on that is, like, you know, you have the main structural tower, and then if you add a twenty-foot whip antenna at the very tip and top of that antenna, well, you increase, you have increased the height. Structurally, it's not any, you're not gonna be able to crawl up that little whip antenna and add another twenty feet on. I don't see that happening.
Yeah.
You...
Yeah, I guess I'm, 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 I see, I see what you're saying. I'm saying if you added something structurally...
Yeah, structural.
To twenty, twenty-one feet.
To, to the antenna. What I'm thinking of, antenna, I'm thinking about the triangle shape.
Yeah.
You know, mast that goes up.
Right. That's what I was...
And if you look, I mean, they tie on all kinds of stuff. Sometimes microwave and everything else is, is attached to that central mast. That's not actually the antenna. I don't think that's transmitting at all. It's the stuff that they put on it that transmits.
That's just the framework.
That's just the framework.
I think, I think it's structurally not, not really possible to continue adding twenty feet of time on something that's already based down there, you know? I mean, it'd be cheaper to put up a new antenna, probably than trying to whatever type to restructure, you know? Because you gotta, if you're adding that, then you gotta start back again down here doing more to it to add twenty feet.
Where'd that line go down? Was that in the, was that in the prior?
Right. Anything that is not underlined across the, comes from the ordinance itself. Conditional use permits, not necessarily specifically permitted without a special exception permit. First one, installing an antenna includes a cell in existing alternative power structure on an existing alternative power structure or structure other than a tower, such as building, et cetera, pre-standing, installing microcell, installing in, in the existing tower height so long as the addition has no more than twenty feet, such as specific placement of any additional building or other supporting structure.
Number one, if it's on the page later.
But plus, if you go to installing an antenna, such permitted use shall also include the placement of any additional building or other used in connection with the antenna. Provided however, the additional building shall be consistent in type and exterior material all the design and construction.
So, they're, they're differentiating between an antenna structure.
Differentiate.
Yeah.
I mean, what, what, where you probably need to restrict is the actual tower structure.
No.
Because like I said, you could put a fiberglass, twenty-foot fiberglass, provided that tower structure sound enough to carry the weight. I mean, you could really increase the height. But like, I'm with you, I think it needs to be a one-time.
Right.
Add-on.
Add-on. Yeah, I think, I think installing an antenna on any existing tower structure of any height, not or any height.
Oh.
Yes, I'm agreeing. So, long as addition of the antenna adds no more than twenty feet to the height of the existing tower structure. And the property, setback to the property lines remains greater than or equal to the total height of the tower, one minute antenna. With a one-time addition of twenty feet.
Tracking there, Doug. So, you wanna put, well, the change is the one-time.
Right, yes.
The one-time.
The only, the existing tower structure, height, not or any height.
Right, that's just a...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, add a structure. To differentiate between the two.
Alright, so how would it read then? Or are you inserting?
Installing an antenna on any existing tower structure.
Tower structure.
So, the antenna adds no more than twenty feet. All of that up until greater than or equal total height, and then adding language in there. One-time addition. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and frankly, you know, spirit of the ordinance, you could get you a thirty-five foot structure that doesn't transmit, but then once you start hanging stuff, I mean, you're gonna increase the height of that just hanging the antenna on. Putting an antenna potentially you are.
Yeah.
So, that needs to be...
Alright, and then the rest of them, each one of the zoning districts with a special exception and non-special exception. So, first we go to AR, this is on the third page, halfway down. He also, and this is where I'm also cleaning up the ordinance a little bit. In terms of permitted uses, since it's say, radio or TV towers, they don't mention wireless telecommunications. And yet, every tower we've had in eight years, I've been communications. So, what I've done is made sure wireless telecommunications is now in there. So, that has nothing to do with this ordinance. This is just cleaning up the existing telecommunications ordinance. So, that's why you'll see that there in a couple of sections. And then, there was conflicting information about that setback issue between this AR communication ordinance. So, realize, we've left the telecommunications ordinance, and now we're into the zoning ordinance, the rest of these zoning ordinance. So, this talked about a setback of two hundred feet. AR, well, that, that's not consistent with what the telecommunications ordinance had, which is what you were already talking, which was, you know, the setback has to be equal to or greater than the height of the tower. So, this conflates until I was going through, is, is now been removed. So, that we have basically consistency with that setback language communications, telecommunications Accessory uses. Number nine, we add amateur radio antenna support structure, tall and less than that. So, again, this is accessory structures. So, basically, automatic, we're gonna have them, if they're thirty-five or less, that's automatic, it's by right. And then, we go in structures where a special exception exceeding thirty-five feet. And you're gonna see this language repeated, but go through it. So, that's it. It's an accessory use. Now, there's an allowance in the telecommunications ordinance that says, well, it can be a primary or a principal use or accessory, but all the language that I've gotten here is accessory. Alright, moving on to page four. We've got R1, and accessory structures combined, thirty-five feet tall and less is by right. And then, D, accessory uses by special exception in R1, if it exceeds thirty-five feet. Now, we don't have a lot of accessory uses by special exception. That's why these numbers are so low. So, this would be number four in the R1, in terms of, most of the other ones are your manufacturing homes for, you know, hardships and construction of the home, which we've done. R2, same language. R4, same language. R5, same language. Changes a little bit, but not much. The intent is the same in PM, plan development. You recall in previous discussions, there's not a lot of specifics in PM. And so, we have to sort of word this appropriately, because remember, there's a development plan required in PM. And that development plan would either address these structures and antennas or wood. So, basically, what the language says is that the antenna satellite, antenna satellite, television, radio, amateur radio antenna and support structures are permitted as indicated in the approved development plan. But absent any guidelines in the approved development plan, then they may be placed in the side yard if attached to a principal building. Amateur radio antenna and support structure, even thirty-five feet, shall be approved by special exception. So, we don't really address anything under thirty-five. We just talk about the special exception here. And again, in PM, it's just because of the way that section the ordinance is structured that the language is different. But back to PR, and it's not different, it's the same there. And then, there's, here's a district that none of us are familiar with, because we don't have any O1. But again, the language is the same in there, it's office residential.
What's the maximum structure height that we're talking about right here in that district?
Structure height?
Yeah.
Well, all of the structures are thirty-five.
Okay.
You know, in terms of buildings. And then, the M1 and M2, where we don't require, let's see, the M1, following accessory uses are permitted. M1, we don't require a special exception, we just allow it in the M1 as an accessory use. And the M2, remember, this is manufacturers in your industrial area, you may have a lot uglier things than some, you know, maybe the owner of the business wants a ham radio tower or a critical part of their business, whatever. Where we loosen it up here, and we don't have the special exception language in here, the way we do in the other ones. So, under M2, following principal uses, wireless, again, that's wireless communications, just a change for that, thirty-five feet tall and under, a principal use, special exception in the M2. Then, we do go to that thirty-five feet foot. And that was already in there as a special exception, we just added wireless telecommunications again. And then, accessory uses permitted without a special exception, just the amateur radio antennas and support structures. So, you know, make the changes that we talked about. See, there's the buffer. Yeah, we need to go back to the buffer and landscape strip and the height of the security fencing. You'll see in security fencing, that's the bottom of page two, I didn't really talk about that. That's required to be sixty in height. So, that's normal for the telecommunications towers or cell towers. Do you want to also, you know, do you wanna make an exception or allow either no fencing or quarter fence for the hams, for the amateurs? So, that's another one we should asterisk to go back to. I believe, when I was looking at some of the other ordinances, there was one ordinance that had a four-foot fence. Or do you want, or do you want, you know, not require one at all?
I don't see where you require one at all. I don't see the point in it. I mean, I see the point in a cell tower, because that's what you call in a trignosis, and, you know, teenagers are wanting to go out there and climb and flying. But this is in a residential area, thirty-foot tall, one, you wouldn't find a make-up on a thirty-five foot tower. I don't think it would support it, but I just don't see the point in it.
Alright, well, we got two of you.
Um, um.
Yeah, I'll see. Exempt, okay. What I'll do is, I'll put in language in there exempting amateur radio support structures and antennas. And I'm gonna guess, if you don't want fencing, you certainly don't need a landscape buffer, right?
No.
No.
Okay. Where in here does it show maximum height?
There is a number, just by special exception. So, if somebody comes in that you just agree with, ask for, or you don't agree with what they ask for? That's why anything over thirty-five by special exception, they'll tell you what they want, and you'll say, now that's too tall, or, okay. You know, in our developed neighborhoods that are house and house and house, you say, hundred-and-twenty, no, too tall. But if they're in the middle of their five acres, I don't know why they'd even follow and come in for one in the middle of five acres, but if they did, hey, I want two hundred, you say, well, yeah, in that area, who's gonna see you anyway? Okay, have your ham tower two hundred feet tall. If this can be under a special exception, I would say, well, we can leave it up and in like that anyway. Well, that's how it is right now, there's no max.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should leave it like that.
I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure, I'm just going down this list to make sure I didn't miss it. Building permit required was on our list?
Yeah, that was already in the telecommunications, so...
That'll stay just with...
That whether you're under thirty-five or over thirty-five, you gotta get a building permit.
Right.
Uh, let's see, I think that's the...
Talking about that. And it's in there, no more than one support structure?
Uh, no, that would be by special exception. They would, I want two, or I want three, or I want one. So, that would be covered by your special exception clause. Unless they're under thirty-five feet. For some reason, they wanted two under thirty-five feet. So, if you still wanna preclude it to one, if they're under thirty-five, we need to address that.
At what point are we requiring an engineering certification? Is that all antennas, or anything over thirty-five feet, or?
I don't think we have language about that. I was looking while you were talking earlier, I was looking for that, and I don't see. I thought there might be something, I mean, you'd hope that it was engineered when it's a cell tower and it's hundred-and-fifty feet tall. And generally, when they come to us, yeah, they're, are engineered, they present it. But in terms of being in the ordinance...
It just says, written manufacturers or professional structural engineers, antenna support structure has been designed in compliance with... Antenna support structure has been designed in compliance with the minimum design loads prescribed by the current edition of the state, Georgia adopted standard building code.
And where are you?
Um, I'm on the Heinzville, where it says section 6.19, page one or two, number three, B3.
I'm just trying to look here.
So an amateur radio tower 35 feet or less?
It's a, it's a top, it says Heinzville, Georgia codable.
Oh, no. You're in Heinzville, yes, Heinzville. No, if you want to put that section in, you would have to put that in, this section.
It said, I think if you're going out and buying a complete kit, or whatever you want to call it, you've got a manufacturer's certification with it. If you're going out and buying a kit and swapping out.
Or you're building one of your own out of raw material.
Right. Then you should have to have something. If you don't have a, I think that, my opinion is if you don't have a manufacturer's, a written manufacturer's certification, then you have to have.
An engineer.
An engineer.
Engineers to come out and.
Just validate that what you're.
What you're putting up is structurally sound.
I don't think you have to have both, you have to have one or the other. And if you're paying for an entire kit, you're going to get that as long as you use that kit, you don't supplement.
All right, so you want to put that Heinzville paragraph in there? B3?
I think that just holds, holds anyone to having to prove that something's structurally sound.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a, it's a setback on their property, but that doesn't mean that somebody's on their property and if anything falls, well, we let them put that up.
And I think that language would be fine for our cell towers too, because they're going to have the structural engineers. Obviously, they're not using kits. They're, are made, you know, by the manufacturer themselves, so that would probably, that language would well in the telecommunications.
Well, I'm also thinking about other antennas, you know, some of these commercial antennas are, you know, a thousand feet high. It's not, it's unlike a cell tower. You know, a cell tower kind goes up like the height of a tower.
Well, no, you have, you get monopoles.
Very significant substructure and, because they're hanging a lot of weight on it.
You got three types.
Yeah.
You got monopoles, which are not supported by anything. You got the lattice ones, which look like a heiffel tower. And then you also have basically a straight rod, which is a guide, you know, is a guide wire support. So those are your three, but those are all telecommunications.
Yeah. I just want to make sure what we're writing covers everything.
That's good, that's good language. It'll work, it's good, it's a lot from a, from a, oh, it's cut glass in.
Yeah, if somebody wants to buy a home with an antenna, they have to get an engineer to take a race over.
It'll get to, it'll get to the permit station. Well, now let's, let's look language and your certification that the antenna support structure has been designed in compliance. So B3, Heinzville only talks about the support structure. Antenna and support structure.
Well, again, we're talking about antennas. Antennas are really the component, that's the, that's the component that transmits. The support structure is what we're really concerned about engineering-wise. Uh, because, you know, an antenna could be a fiberglass pole with a, you know, I don't know how they construct it, but they've got some kind of wire or something run up through the center of it that when you energize it, it transmits. Uh, that's actually attached to the support structure.
Oh, and, you know, we were talking about the fencing. They are right below the section in Heinzville we talked about is the four-foot fence. So we're not going to put in, but their Heinzville requires the four-foot fence. And an and, or, or shall have an approved anti-climb device. But anyway. All right, just to be clear, when we put the Heinzville language in, it talks about the structure, not the antenna.
Yeah, I think the structure is what we're.
Yeah. All right, so I guess everybody's comfortable with where we are with special exception versus by right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that kind of emphasizes the role amateur has in doing it as a hobby, not as a profession. So you should be able to, that's what, that's what you're into.
Well, and when we have the public hearing, hopefully we'll have some of the amateur radio operators, certainly at least Mr. Pence and maybe Mr. Booth, comment. And then some of these questions that we had hoped ARRL would have helped us with, maybe they'll have some answers, a little more light on the path that we've already walked.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, um, is the.
Before we leave then, are we ready to go for public hearing?
Uh, do you guys want to see the language first or?
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
All right, one more meeting before public hearing. Very good.
And I think that'll give them time to see it, see it also. Okay, um, item B is the gateways or overlays, I mean, district.
Yeah, I need to get the material for that. I still don't have it.
Oh, you're not getting the, you didn't get the email.
Yeah. Um, we've got, I think draft one is still the first one.
Yeah, remember Meg, she's the ones that Meg was prepared as part of her project, so.
What's your mail with that, Ben?
There was one, I believe it was earlier today.
Oh.
And, um, I thought I had actually sent it out last week and then I couldn't find where I thought I had sent it out last week, so I sent it again, I believe it was this morning, because I couldn't find it whatsoever. I had delivered a, I'll see, I have it.
Have this?
I have it, yes. Right, but you haven't had time to look it up. I apologize.
Um, do you guys want to come back to that? Um, you give Sam time to do that. Do we have any?
Well, we would, we're going to try to do at least two tonight and then come to tiny homes next time.
Yeah, we haven't started on tiny homes.
Yes, I think we need to spend some time on that.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I know we originally went through this gateway, um, draft. A lot of this, we were talking about using the city of times in some of these places. Um, or some of these sections, I should say. I say, I say we come back to this next month with going through this draft. Um, having finally here next month, Doug can have something that becomes part of a Here for the next week.
You do have, I believe, part of the materials that Meg handed out was the Thomasson background material, so you do have it.
Were these sent, I can't remember if these were in your email or just the draft?
I'm just direct.
Okay. So Sam, um, Meg gave us back, this is dated 7/29, so it must have been the August meeting.
I missed that one.
So do you still have your?
Well, I'm sitting here looking at it on my phone.
But you haven't seen this.
I haven't seen that, no.
So do you have your materials from your August meeting?
My August meeting?
What, here?
No, I don't.
You had it.
That's what I'm saying, I don't have that.
Um, Doug, can you get him? Can you get this?
The Thomasson stuff?
Yeah.
Well, he should have.
I don't have anything for gateway. I came back, I guess.
Did you get your packet?
Yeah.
It was in your packet.
It was, yes, this was in the packet.
I think it would have been in your August packet.
It was.
If you don't, if you don't let Doug know so he can get to you.
I have a big stack of stuff on my desk, I don't have to go through it.
That's kind of where we went when we went through this originally, was trying to get up to, um, some of the city of times. Um, okay, item C is tiny homes. Um, again, same thing, we've got a draft and then we've got some information that Meg provided us with that. This is also going to be in your August packet. So you should have two things there. One of the things I think that we had talked about, um, with the tiny house ordinance, and if somebody else remembers this better than I do, jump in here, is we wanted a list of specs for the state or other counties with tiny house ordinances, um, to see what, what is out there.
Well, I'm, Adam Shear, I'm going to see, we'll, we'll look at what's out there, but I, I'm going to guess that we probably are going to just defer to whatever state guidelines are. I don't know that we need to, and remember, this was Meg, Meg being intern and she was doing the best she could. And she gave us a start, you know, she gave us a great start to begin with, but I don't think that in this ordinance, you would do this, do all these sort of specifications of basically, or the building code for tiny homes. I'm not sure this is, we want to include that, we'll just defer to whatever ICC adopts or the state and, and go with that. So we may take all these specifics out and just reference that.
I think the biggest thing that's going to be a decision, I mean, I thought we pretty much decided we wanted to do is communities. I think that was where we basically, pretty much it'd be a tiny home community, not just.
You just could buy a lot in the middle of subdivision and put a tiny home in it.
Uh, I think the only exception maybe there would be if, if you had the property and, you know, it would be like a mother-in-law's suite, if you had the property in the setback, if I could keep her out of my house and I could put a tiny home out there and keep it happy, you know, that would be a consideration. And the other, the only other thing was, um, I think you can, you can buy them on wheels or you can have them stick built on, on site. I think there's two different options out there for tiny homes.
Well, and my suggestion on that is they're on built on a chassis and wheels are called an RV.
That's, that's where I meant too, so of course, you know.
You're an RV.
If we're going to do a tiny home, that would be my suggestion, but it, okay, it's a, it's a foundation situation, it's not, not a mobile, we want it with.
Yeah, that's a mobile home.
Well, and, and frankly, potentially, when you buy, you build it for your mother-in-law, then it's a guest house.
Yeah, you do have a guest house.
I know it does, it does all of that, but the guest house, the guest house requirements are bigger than a tiny home.
Unless you dig it, is there a minimum square footage on a guest house?
I have a number in my head.
Is it 450 or 800?
Yeah, there is, there is in the tiny home.
Tiny homes can be 250 square feet.
Yeah, that's, like I said, that's the only variation that you have there from either a guest house or.
I saw a couple moving in on one of the circles out there in Silver Town today. They had their bags packed out there and moving in one of them.
A tiny home?
Yeah, the other one sat in this circle, oh, oh.
Did they have tiny bags?
Tiny bags too.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is less than 400 square feet, not more than, and more than 220 on a permanent foundation.
So that, that would, that would be the main things, I think, that we got to, sort of.
Well, we may have to clean up that language, I mean, because we're talking about a guest house, it has a minimum of 800 square feet. We may as well just want to say anything less than 800 square feet is sound.
Well, there's a state definition, so we just want to be different from the state.
You've already defined it as a tiny home on the state. What, what I'm talking about is whether we would, instead of saying you could have a guest house, you could put a tiny home on that with those same regulations setbacks.
Okay.
That's, that's where I'm saying, that, that we'd have to address that. Um, that would be, what I would think would be maybe the only exception that you'd look at if we're going to allow it, guest house.
Well, if you're talking about commute, well, like you create, I know you was on the definition.
And actually, you just changed the size of your life for that guest house.
Well, if you're talking about plan development, say Chase Finley came in here and he wanted to put tiny homes down there on the river, then that, he presents his plan and we consider it either approved or disapproved, or any developer, it doesn't have to be Chase, I'm just throwing that out there, but, um, I'm, I'm tracking with you.
Well, the ordinance that she has provided to us to get us started basically tracks the RV park ordinance, I think literally that's what she did, is she took the RV park ones and put it into tiny homes. That might be a start. The other thing that I was thinking about is do we want to allow tiny homes in the manufactured home parks and in actual RV parks? So the three alternatives would be put them in an RV park, put them in a manufactured home park, or put them just exclusively by themselves in a, uh, tiny home park, which the way she's got it crafted is a minimum of five units, maximum of 20 units, and can't get any bigger than that.
I think you keep it separate by itself because, um, if these are going to be site-built on a foundation, they should not be in a manufactured home, RV park.
Yeah.
That can be moved.
What about an RV park?
How many of them do you have?
That becomes a permanent.
Mm-hmm. Well, you know, I guess it would depend on if you had, if you had a big acreage and I had, and I had a drive and this went to an RV park, and then I had acreage that I could develop a tiny home, but not mix it to, you know? I mean, this, this might give some beans and butter.
Going back to the, uh, what is it, mobile, you know, if the, typically what they do is they, they bring in, you know, a fabricated house and they put it up and they lease it or rent it or whatever, or maybe the, the person owns it and puts it up and then he pays rent on the land. But if the landowner who's developed that park wants to put up tiny homes, I don't see where the objection to that, I don't have an objection to it, as long as they're aesthetically equivalent to what's being, what's in there already.
Talking about, even greater than the inch.
I mean, so, I mean, if you look, I'm, I'm just looking at the, the, the mobile home parks we already have in this community, some of those mobile homes are pretty permanent. If, if, they've been there a long, long time. So, you know, a stick-built mini-home being built adjacent to it, I don't have an objection to that. If, if the, we may want to say that, you know, a minimum lot size or something like that, or they have to bring in a. or something like that, or they have to bring in a plan, or...
Well, if you decide that they're allowed in manufacturing parks, we just look at the requirements for manufacturing parks.
They're already designated. You know, if a lot would be set, it would have water, sewer, and a lot of stuff would run to it. So that would not be a problem.
Well, and that's to be set up for a regular manufacturing home anyway.
Sure.
That's what I'm saying, sorry.
Yeah. I mean, a manufactured home versus a tiny home, what we're talking about is really, I won't call substandard, but that's not the right term, and it's probably offensive to some people, but...
A difference.
It's a lower... It's a lower standard than, say, a conventional-built 1500 square foot home.
But a tiny home?
Well, the whole point is to get tiny, to get small, and...
Tiny home, but per square foot, it's going to cost you more to build than per square foot. You know, if you just square foot it, it's more expensive to build because of the things that you've got to fit in that area to work. Then conventional stuff that you pull off and shove it on deep. Because it's all specialized equipment, specialized, you know, tubs, showers, all those things are specialized.
Well, so is a manufactured home. I mean, if you look at a manufactured home, none of that stuff is...
Nanny is... Most of it is nanny. I mean, because you get $300,000 on a mobile home. Unless you might just insure one.
$300,000? Wow. Well, I don't have a problem, you know, necessarily. They got to go... I mean, if we're going to allow them, they got to go somewhere. And RV parks, I don't know about RV parks.
That's...
Because RV parks connotes wheels.
Right, right. And I think that...
I mean, that...
That goes against the whole thing of an RV park not living there, not being permanent.
Yeah, they're stretching out how long you've sat there and all that kind of stuff when you had RV parks. So you better not even address that. Alright?
Okay.
Just like you said, if somebody wants to have an RV park over here and a completely separate tiny homes, there's no... I'm okay with that.
It's all part of the grand plan.
Right.
For not to develop.
But not fix, not fix.
The development.
Well, and that's how you have the RVs. If you remember, the RVs in a manufactured home, they have to be separated.
Separated.
Supposed to have a separate entrance.
Right, right. Okay. So, Sam, if you can look and see if you have this for tiny homes.
I'll let them know. I've got to go up there anyway.
Then we'll... Next time, we'll look at the drafts. Hopefully, put something together for the two of them so that we can go forward for the public hearing, or maybe one more round of looking at it language-wise before the public hearing.
Well, I don't hear much difference other than for tiny homes.
I don't think there's a lot of difference. I'm just saying, once we go through it, if there's not a lot of difference still, then we'll maybe move to the...
Well, I think gateways, you could put a lot more time into that. I mean...
I think that's definitely been more important of the...
Yes. Gateways, we've got, let's see, you've got design guidelines, buildings, mandatory green space. We talk about mandatory and excluded colors. I think the sign section needs to be beefed up a little bit. It only talks about billboards, plantings, you know, and trees. And then, are you just happy with, you know, she's designated the physical location where these districts are going to be the overlay. Are you happy where those lines are drawn? I mean, that's something we need to look at too. So I think you've got a lot of work on the gateways. I think the tiny homes can be done relatively quickly. I guess by consensus, we're thinking, yes, we'd allow them in the manufactured home parks. Basically, yes, manufactured, yes, their own kind of separate park, and not an RV, and just set them up like that. And I think that, you know, Meg's got most of that there. I think that's in pretty good shape. Not a lot of changes to that language. But I think you need a lot of work on gateways.
Yeah, yeah. Gateways is important.
And it's going to cost people money. Whatever we do, if you're going to increase the standards in that geographic area, it's going to cost people... What do you mean, I got to preserve the first 35, 30, put trees and shrubs and all that in there?
But we shouldn't have to... But companies, when they're coming into town, let's choose a path to get them to their location. And that happens. When they're... When they're dining and dining companies, they pick a route to carry them around the county and around the city to get them to where they're going. I know that.
There's certain routes you don't want them to take.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's...
That's why we have a gateway.
That's why we have a gateway, because they do that. They're... Those are the routes. If you're running with somebody in town, they pay.
That's the way.
Yeah, you run this way. And not the other way.
I understand.
Yeah.
No new business tonight? No other business? Any tiny commissioner, mountaintop issues? Have I got anything? Secretary's issues?
Uh, the only thing is Hocken Hall is going to tomorrow night's Board of Commissioners with or without PowerPoint presentation. We don't have any applications in yet for your December meeting, but I'm anticipating at least two, so... Unfortunately, you may have your business in December.
Alright, um...
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Or adjourn?
I'm like diligent African to find that material. It's there somewhere. I need to expand documents. So what was your official retirement date when you started going back in?
That goes back... That's like two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So Jeff, did you own your own since or were you working for somebody else?
No, I don't own it.
That's what I thought.
So you... Twenty-eight years.
You counted that, and so I've got a back end.
Back end is how many is the building?
Y'all have a good night?
Good night.
Hey Brad, this is Doug. We're... Our meeting is over. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Pam.
Alright, so... Thank you. See you guys next time.
Yeah. The end of 2020.
The end of 2020.
Whatever.
I still got some magic keys.
Yes, you have this weekly. Turn it off. And I'll put this on for you.
Okay.
For notes.
See you in the morning.
Alright, here it is.
Thank you. Wow. Emergency laptop.
Yeah, because they need to check that one for you tomorrow and get it on a cover. What's up with it? Because you... You have a power problem with me?
I guess I won't.
Wow.
Unless they... Somebody owns me there with a laptop.
Does, um... Do you ever have a laptop?
No.
Oh, good. And that's...
Well, and I thought we had got... This was Robert's handing it down. At least that he didn't remember handing it down, so anyway. It was never brand-new. It was somebody else's.
Yeah, that could be pricey.
Well, you see, I mean, I have to see what's left in the budget. We, you know, we just dented it, but I just don't... And I'm behind on my personal accounting to see what's left in there. Nice.